Hello and welcome to the 31st Annual Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities Awards Ceremony. I'm Kathleen Cairns, emceeing the event for today. And yes, it is virtual because the world is still facing COVID. But one word comes to mind when I think about our special group here in Baltimore County, and that is perseverance. So many of us have persevered, working through it, and still able to help people with differing abilities in whatever capacity they needed it. And that truly is an inspiration. We're going to begin this by going to our Chairwoman, Teri Parrish, and hearing a few words.
Good evening. I am Teri Sights Parrish, Chair of the Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities. It's my pleasure to welcome you to the 31st Annual Commission on Disabilities Awards Ceremony. We wish we were with you in person, holding the celebration with a luncheon gathering as we did prior to the pandemic. In adapting to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Commission has decided it is best to recognize our award winners through video presentation. Let me congratulate our six outstanding award recipients. We're so pleased that our county residents from all walks of life made the effort to nominate the people and organizations we honor this evening. Every year through the awards program, the Commission learns valuable lessons from our honorees. We get motivated, we get inspired, we benefit from the new opportunities to better understand the people we serve. Our honorees and nominators broaden our horizons and help the Commission on Disabilities fulfill its mission. I'd like to thank the members of the Commission and Baltimore County staff members who helped produce our video program. I'd like to give a special shout out to Brian Glock, our photographer and videographer, who traveled far and wide to take all of these photographs and film video clips. Then he put the whole thing together. Wow. Thanks a lot, Brian. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Baltimore County Executive John Oshewski Jr. County Executive Oshewski has shown himself to be resourceful, caring, and compassionate at times when people need assistance. I thank Baltimore County for the support it provides to the Commission on Disabilities. We truly appreciate it. On behalf of the Commission, I thank County Executive John Oshewski for joining us this evening.
Hello, everyone. I am pleased to have the opportunity to participate in the Commission's 31st Annual Awards Ceremony. I want to thank the Commission for adapting to the challenges posed by COVID-19 in order to continue this cherished tradition. The Commission on Disabilities Awards Program gives us an opportunity to recognize outstanding achievement. All of us can learn from the dedication and perseverance of our award recipients. The awards program also represents a vital opportunity for the Commission, and thereby Baltimore County, to reach out to new people and gain new insights. We are pleased that nominators take the time to write compelling narratives about their candidates. And we are always moved by the nominations we receive. There are so many people in our communities doing important work to better the lives of people with disabilities.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Teri Sap for receiving its Chairperson's Award. Teri Sap provided invaluable service to people with disabilities through his service as a Baltimore County employee charged with managing the logistics associated with the county's COVID-19 vaccination effort. Teri agreed to attend meetings of the Commission on Disabilities. He heard a variety of concerns related to mobility and access. Teri Sap reported back to the Commission several times, noting that several Commission suggestions had been carried out, including production of an instructional video. County vaccination sites were then equipped with many features that assisted people with disabilities, including golf carts, wheelchairs, and a low-stimulus room. Mobile vaccination sites also helped connect people with disabilities to the process. The Commission is pleased to recognize Teri Sap for his responsiveness throughout this effort and his true dedication to meeting the needs of people with disabilities. The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Teri Sap.
My role is to identify and plan the process to do the mass vaccinations of as many people as we could, ideally, all of our eligible Baltimore County residents. We were very fortunate that we were able to get the Maryland State Fairgrounds, which is a significantly large space. And then I had to plan out how we were going to move those hundreds of thousands of people through the process. It was really important to get that feedback from the communities that had those needs and were able to give us direct feedback on what we needed to do to improve our processes. A mass vaccination site is really designed for that, the masses. And most of those masses are mobile and don't have any needs. However, we heard a lot of feedback that said, you know, there are many needs that are not being met and could be met better. And that was important feedback for us to hear. And so we took all of the suggestions that we received and put them into action so that we could make sure that no one had barriers to accessibility at any of our vaccination sites. We actually had golf carts that met folks at their cars and brought them to the site. We had a quiet room. We had a low stimuli room so that for people who are autistic, people with PTSD or anxiety disorders, could have a quieter space with less stimulation and have a reduced anxiety level and reduced agitation. We did see a large uptick in people with disabilities that were utilizing our resources at our mass vaccination sites. So we would hope that because we were seeing those folks coming in, that that meant that we had reduced some of those barriers. We also had a homebound team. So if we had Baltimore County residents that were unable to take an Uber, which we did arrange Uber transportation for many residents, but if they were unable to get in a car, if they had to remain homebound, we had a homebound team that would go to them. So we really worked hard to try to reduce as many barriers as possible. So the premise was that they would roll in with all the equipment, set it up very quickly, do the vaccinations, and then could pack everything up and roll out and go to other sites. And we did hear directly from our constituents that by bringing the vaccine into the communities, it reduced barriers one more time, that rather than having to find a way to take public transportation, or an Uber, or find a way to get to the fairgrounds that might be five, six miles from their location, that we were right in their communities. They were churches, shopping malls, high schools, middle schools, all different places that we could go to provide accessibility to vaccine. We saw our numbers go up. Our vaccination numbers in the county continue to grow. So we know that the more we're out there, the more people were able to vaccinate. I'm very grateful, very humbled to receive this award, but I feel a little awkward accepting it as well, because it's really the entire team that made this possible. Both the Commission themselves and the members of the community providing us with that feedback, that valuable feedback of what we needed, and the hundreds and hundreds of staff that worked at these vaccination sites and continue to go out and work in these vaccination sites. So it's an award, but I share it with the many members of the Health Department, the Fire Department, Department of Aging, and Rec and Parks, all the county agencies and all of the staff that have made all of it possible.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Rachel Leeds and Gabriella Tashudo for receiving its Student of the Year Award. Rachel Leeds and Gabriella Tashudo are roommates at Goucher College. They've worked closely together as co-leaders of the college's Equal Access Club. This club allows students to express concerns about the on-campus needs of students with disabilities. Rachel and Gabriella have demonstrated steadfast commitment to speaking out on behalf of students with disabilities. In fact, Rachel has served on the Goucher College Board of Trustees. Gabriella presently serves as a student representative to the college's master planning process. Rachel and Gabriella are partners and friends united in their pursuit of access improvements to the Goucher campus.
I started Goucher in 2016, and I found out about equal access at the Involvement Fair. And I'd just been diagnosed with a chronic illness. I was trying to figure out like where I stood with all of that. And it was just very, very helpful for me. And through the years, I took on more and more of a leadership role. And basically, what we do right now is we focus on both advocacy and also support. So for advocacy, we work just to make Goucher a more accessible place and to dismantle various barriers to accessibility that we face and also that students face as a whole. And then for support, we want to be a safe, welcoming space where students who are disabled or chronically ill, mentally ill, neurodivergent, have learning differences can just feel safe and comfortable talking about challenges that they may face or just experiences that they have.
So I transferred in in 2019 in the fall. And I think somebody had mentioned the club to me when I toured campus before I transferred. But then I ended up going to the Involvement Fair as well. And Rachel was there, and a friend of ours, I think M, was there.
Yeah, M.
And I had been involved in a disability advocacy student group at my community college. So I knew it was something I was interested in. So I thought I would check it out, and it's been awesome representing our club and other students with disabilities or health conditions such in this master planning thing. And it's looking at how the school moves forward in the next five, 10, 20 years, what needs to change, what needs to be built, what areas of campus are utilized, and how they can be utilized better. So I've been there to just really push the accessibility viewpoint, and I'm pretty excited. We just had a meeting yesterday, and I feel like people are really understanding the importance of that accessibility piece and not brushing it aside.
Yeah. And it's helpful because a lot of the time, I feel like the issues that happen in physical space, if you address them before the building happens and before the plans are set, it's so much easier than if, say, like a building is built and it's not accessible, and then like what are you going to do to fix it? It's so much harder. So it's been really awesome that Gabby's sort of been spearheading, thinking about all of those things earlier on in the process. And then also, I think it would, one thing that I think that they're working on that would be really helpful is a better way of reporting barriers so that if a door isn't operating, or there are lights that are out, or just things that are making campus not accessible, that students have a better way of reporting that and getting those issues addressed. And then also looking at non-physical disabilities too, and how can we make the campus a more accessible space for people who have sensory processing disorders?
Or hearing.
Or hearing, or on the autism spectrum, and those types of things. So I think that's what we're looking at going forward. And I'm also just really happy that like we won it together because we've been working pretty much like as a team, and it's just nice that we can sort of share this experience.
Yeah, I mean, we share so much of the work that it wouldn't feel right to not have us both acknowledge.
Yeah. So this is just fun, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, weren't expecting it at all.
Yeah, we want to thank Santa Wallace for nominating us.
She's wonderful.
She's lovely.
She's our advisor.
Yes.
She's fantastic.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Stacy McClear for receiving its Volunteer Award. Stacy McClear initiated a unique effort to assist people with disabilities and other populations facing challenges, including the homeless and people facing poverty. Stacy and her husband purchased a home at 350 Main Street in Reisterstown, and they transformed it into the Kavanaugh House. The Kavanaugh House is now a multifaceted center that provides hands-on training and assistance to people in need. Stacy works tirelessly to provide food, supplies, daycare, transportation, and other resources to the clients served at the Kavanaugh House. Neither Stacy nor any of the staff members who assist with the operations at the Kavanaugh House receive payment for the hours they give simply to help others.
I took my passion for sewing and creative work, and my passion to help, and I put them together. That's how this sort of formed. All of our instructors right now are volunteers. They all are professionals in their trade who have their own businesses, and they are generously donating their time to help. And so we have somebody who is an expert in fashion apparel. Her name is Jackie Seal, and she, and so then I assist her. We also have other volunteers that assist her who are also self-taught sewers. We have a gentleman who runs our upholstery school here. His name is Alan Iabella. He owns Iabella Upholstery, and he volunteers his time. And then he brought on another gentleman, Sean Lewis, who owns a company called Pillowtalk. And actually, he is actually going to partner with us, and we are opening a second location in Baltimore City. It's going to be a 2,400 square foot space off of Wycomico Street, and that is going to be a professional upholstery sewing workroom. And Sean is going to be down there full-time with us. And so it's a great opportunity. Our fashion apparel students, we are partnering with an organization called Sew Bromo, which is also in the same building downtown. And it'll be an apprenticeship for our fashion apparel students. So they will start here and learn the fundamentals, and then they will move into that apprenticeship and then become part of their productive production team. And they are doing phenomenal. It requires a little bit more of one-on-one attention. There's our more cognitive disabilities. But we are a self-paced program. There's no like, there's no end date where you have to be done the program in two years or a year. It's, you know, it's sort of, you know, we regulate it to however, you know, it's a trade that takes, it's a skill that takes a lot of time to learn. And we do try to get students earning income as quickly as possible. Maybe in the beginning, they're not earning a living wage income because their skills aren't up to industry standards, but we do try to generate and create avenues that they can make money. For example, our students now, and three of the students I just talked to you about that are coming from Atlas, we are now doing pop-up boutique sales and craft fairs every other month. And they, we have donated fabric, people generously donate fabric to our organization all the time. And so our students are allowed to utilize that fabric and make whatever they want. So right now, we're on a big making time of items for this craft show. And then the students get to keep 100% of that profit. And so it is a way for them to feel good about themselves, take pride in what they're doing, and also earn some income at the same time. It also gets them out and learning communication skills because they'll have to communicate with the public. They learn a little bit about the business side and how to handle money. We do, once students start taking, start bringing in money and start earning income, we do offer financial literacy classes. So if they don't have a checking account or saving accounts, we teach them how to open that. We help them open one. We teach them how to budget a little bit. So, you know, it sort of encompasses everything. I absolutely love being here. I mean, I have been, I was a nurse for a long time prior to having children, and I loved being a nurse. And then I love being a mom, but this sort of just like, I don't, it's just, I have so much fun. I can't wait to come here the next day. I really do. I'm involved in a craft and a career that I love. I love fabric, and I love sewing, and I love all the aspects of it. But, you know, everyone's like, it's so nice of what you're doing for these people, and, you know, it must be so rewarding for them. And to be honest, I don't know who it's more rewarding for. Like, sometimes I leave here and I'm like, okay, am I doing this more for me or for them? Because I just feel like, you know, the relationships I'm developing with these individuals and the way that I can educate the community about, you know, the stereotypes that, you know, adults that are in, you know, that are on government assistance or with disabilities, you know, there's such stereotypes that, you know, about them, and they can be a huge part and a huge asset to the community. And so it's all of that that is just so wonderful.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Stella Maris for receiving the Employer Award. Stella Maris provides long-term care, hospice care, and rehabilitative services to senior citizens. For the past four years, Stella Maris has worked in collaboration with the ARC Baltimore to provide employment opportunities to people with disabilities who receive guidance and services from the ARC. The organization treats employees with a disability with dignity and respect that all employees deserve. Stella Maris recognizes the importance of diversity and inclusiveness. Stella Maris supervisors ensure that each employee fully understands his or her tasks and that they are afforded opportunities for advancement.
Here at Stella Maris, we have a lot of different departments. The three main ones that our staff from the ARC that work in is Materials Management, Dining and Housekeeping. What's great about Materials, Dining and Housekeeping is that they kind of touch base with all of our employees, or all of our residents and patients, from rehab to long-term care, to hospice, and to our apartments here on campus. With that, Dining, they will serve our residents, make sure that they get the right meals. Housekeeping, they're keeping the rooms clean, cleaning our bathroom and different parts of the building running. And then Materials is making sure where our supplies are going well and getting them to our staff. I believe the rewards that the staff receive, at least from the ARC and then from the employees, the ARC employees feel very accomplished. They enjoy coming to work every day. They like having a real purpose. They, you know, they're another staff member that need to get the job done. They're treated just like another staff member, and they really enjoy that. They really, sometimes we have to remind them to take days off, that it's their paid time off that they have to take. And then on the other hand, with our other staff members, I think it's just, they really enjoy having, you know, someone from a different experience, from different backgrounds to work with, and kind of bring a different spin on everything. I will say a lot of our staff from the ARC are very positive, and I think it's really good for our staff members, especially during COVID when it's been really tough. And so it's really nice to have a little bit of positivity coming in. I think the best thing is to know that everyone wants a purpose in life. Everyone wants to, if they can contribute in some way, whether it's small or big, and I think everyone deserves a chance. And I think with this, different companies can learn how to get a little creative. And once you get a little creative and stop thinking, you know, inside the box always, you can really, that's when the magic happens. And really, I think it's just not just getting a job done every day, and that's when you're really living a mission and really making your company better instead of just trying to push things to get done. And I think that's working with our ARC employees have really done for Stella Maris is, you know, really thinking outside the box and really, you know, making it a really good experience for everyone.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Ganati Rumets for receiving its Employee Award. Ganati Rumets has been working at Home Depot since March 2019. He worked through the pandemic. Ganati provides customers with excellent service. He's active and enthusiastic while helping customers load their cars with purchased items. He stock shelves and frequently engages with customers. If you see Ganati at Home Depot, it is guaranteed he will greet you with a smile and offer to help. Ganati was actually born in Moscow and then arrived in the United States at the age of three after being adopted by an American family. Prior to joining the workforce, Ganati attended the Chimes School where he learned vocational skills and completed the curriculum. Ganati often walks to work, he rarely calls out, and he picks up extra shifts. He's very dependable as an employee and is known for his ever-present smile and his very positive demeanor.
I am a lot attended at the Home Depot. My job is very exciting. I get to help customers out all day. I get to lift a lot of heavy stuff like concrete mix, toilets, mulch, lawnmowers, Christmas trees. I got to tie them down next month because now we're getting the Christmas season.
What kind of things did you learn at Chimes?
I learned a lot of working environments. I learned how to like relax on the job, how to be more patient, more, get more better at my speaking to customers and speaking to other people. It was a good six years of learning stuff with the Chimes. I've learned food service. I've learned warehouse work. I've learned a lot to get me this far, to get a job like this, and for me to keep a job like this. I want to be able to train other people that want to be here and want to work here and train them to get the values of keeping a job and starting out. One of the guys that hired me, basically, when he started this job, and he started doing the same thing what I started doing, and now he's a store manager. So I believe that people can get promotions, and I can help out with that. I feel very honored, and it's something I've been working all year long. And I've basically been doing like, I've been basically coming into work first thing in the morning, then if somebody didn't, if the closer didn't show up, there was a lot of times I would come back to work and close up the same day. So I feel very honored of this award.
The Baltimore County Commission on Disabilities wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Teri Spurrier for receiving the Advocate Award. For nearly 50 years, Teri Spurrier has been a staunch advocate for people with disabilities while working for the ARC Baltimore. She started as a direct support professional at one of the ARC's day programs and now serves as the Director of the Career Catalyst Program. Teri is laser-focused on finding employment for individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities. She's the embodiment of the program's motto of finding not just a job, but a career. Her advocacy goes well beyond helping clients find employment, as she often assists people with other critical aspects of their lives. Teri Spurrier is a role model for all professionals who serve people with disabilities.
The Career Catalyst Program, it's a work readiness program, provides education and internship opportunities for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities that are seeking opportunities to work competitively in the community. A lot of folks that we support really just don't know what's available to them. So, you know, during the program, we help them explore different opportunities and, because folks, you know, we all do a better job when we love what we're doing. So it's our hopes that someone will get placed in a position that they value and are valued, and that they can continue to grow within that position and move up through different job tasks or positions within the company. This work's rewarding to me when I see someone who challenges themselves, and I see through that process that their self-esteem really increases, that their abilities that maybe weren't showcased before are just really coming out, and you really see a very self-confident, very independent person who's just then more willing to want to do more things and involve themselves more and just get more and more involved in the community. So it excites me when I see people succeed.
That concludes our 31st Annual Show. If you're sitting in your living room right now, or you're near one of your loved ones, give them a hug. And if you see any of these winners out on the street, or you have their email, or a way to get in touch with them, shoot them a congratulations. We're so proud of the winners here in the latest year when we're fighting so much trouble with COVID, yet they were able to do so much with people with differing abilities. We're proud of them, in awe, and in...